Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our October 4th, 2017 City Council meeting. Before we start the meeting, we have Pastor Ron Bailey from New Beginnings Church here this evening with a number of other pastors, and I'd like all those pastors to please come forward. Ron is going to deliver the opening prayer, plus I've asked that we observe a moment of silence for those men and women and young adults that perished or were injured in the Las Vegas attack. Pastor Bailey?
We all stand for a moment of silence. Almighty God, in this time of trouble, turmoil, and tragedy, we need you more than we've ever needed you before. We come tonight to ask your blessing on the City Council and on the city of Los Banas. We pray for those that have been wounded, lost their lives, been brutalized in Las Scripture declares that first of all, petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. We pray that for our beloved city. We are also promised that if we will humble ourselves, seek you, and turn from our wicked ways, that you will heal our land. So tonight, Lord, we do humble ourselves and ask for your mercy and blessing. Give the leaders of our city, the City Council and administrators, the police and firefighters, as well as the first responders, the wisdom of Solomon. We also ask for your divine protection for our City Council members and staff, our police and firefighters, and first responders. O God, may you help us all to be the kind of peacemakers that you blessed, so that we may be called and seen as the children of God. And tonight, we pray in the words of St. Francis, that where there is hatred, let us so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is despair, hope. In this time of great need, help us to realize that it is in giving that we receive, and it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. We pray this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you pastors. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of October 4th, 2017. And Chief Breezy, would you lead us in the pledge?
I would lead it in the name of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, roll call. City Council members, City Clerk Maloney?
Correa?
Here.
Johnson, Santos.
Lewis here.
Present.
Silvera?
Present.
Holm.
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. May I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silvera?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Silvera, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Presentations, two this evening. Proclamation recognizing October 17th as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and proclamation recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I've asked Mayor Protem Silvera to read these proclamations. I just had cataract surgery, and the printing is just a little small right now. So, my agenda has a larger print this evening. So, with that, I thank you, Mr. Silvera, for doing that for me.
If I could ask, if I could ask Grover and Diana Thurston to come up? Proclamation recognizing October 2017 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is projected to affect 115 million people worldwide by 2050, and whereas in the United States alone, more than 5 million people and additional caregivers are affected by Alzheimer's disease, and whereas each year, people with Alzheimer's disease experience devastating physical and emotional challenges, as ability to remember, learn, and think worsen over time. And whereas the Los Banas Support Group was founded by Eileen Sorensen and Diana Ingram-Thurston for the purpose of assisting numerous persons with coping skills and education. And whereas the Los Banas Alzheimer Support Group participated in the Merced County Alzheimer's Association 2016 Walk to End Alzheimer's, and was the top fundraising team. Congratulations. They will again be sponsoring a team for the October 7th, 2017 event in order to raise funds for research, to find a cure, and to raise awareness among the public. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the mayor and City Council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and encourage those in the community to learn more about Alzheimer's disease, and to support the individual living with this disease and their caregivers. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll speak quickly, but over two decades ago, we started the local support group. And since then, hundreds and hundreds of families have gone through our group, and I'm especially proud of everyone that has stuck with it and dealt with supporting the people that are coming in. Just this week, another one of our people lost their person with Alzheimer's. Her mother died this week. We have gone through so many deaths in the last 25 years from this disease. And the thing that is different about Alzheimer's is there's a lot of little deaths before you get to the Alzheimer's, both for the patient and for the caregiver. And I just want to brag about our group, because I'm so proud of us. We're open. We want anyone to come, third Wednesday of the month at noon, or you can call me 24 hours a day, people do. And I just want to say that last year, it was the first time Los Banas was ever represented in the Merced County Walk, and we were up against 46 other teams, including several hospitals in Merced. And when we won first place, and I won first place for sales for raising things, literally the mayor of Merced choked. So, I was really happy for a change for Merced County to realize that Los Banas is alive and well. As of right now, the walk is this coming Saturday, and there are 55? And as of the moment, we're still number one. So, be proud of Los Banas, and if you know anybody who has Alzheimer's, or who is caring for someone that has dementia, call us, reach out. This is not something you want to do alone. And Grover, I think you have something for Mike.
This is a shirt from last year, which I'm wearing. Would like you to have it, and please be sure to tell Leslie to wash it in cold water.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations again. This is a proclamation for domestic violence awareness. Proclamation recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas advocates and organizations work on behalf of victims every day, domestic violence shelters and services, law enforcement officials, healthcare providers, court systems, legal aid providers, and others are all integral part of the effort to end domestic violence, and should be recognized and applauded for their work. And whereas domestic violence affects women, men, and children of all racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. And whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and people living with disabilities, increase their vulnerability to intimidate partner violence. And whereas among families, domestic violence is the third leading cause of homelessness. And whereas all victims deserve access to culturally appropriate programs and services to increase their safety and improve their life situation. And whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, and serious adult health problems. And whereas there is a need to increase the public awareness and understanding of domestic violence and the needs of victims. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs that work toward improving victim's safety, and hold perpetrators of domestic violence accountable for their actions against individuals and our society as a whole.
Hello, my name is Rena Nino, and I'm with Valley Crisis Center. We have an office here, and we do offer services to both men, women, and children. On the 26th of October, we'll be hosting our Peace for Families event, and I would love to invite you all to attend. We will be meeting at Pacheco Park, and then going over to the community center for some activities and just some resources. We also have our Purple Purse Campaign, which we are asking for support from the community, because so many times, people think of domestic violence as just physical abuse, but financial abuse is a very big reason why people stay in abusive relationships. So, we're selling these, well, we're not selling. Asking for donations, and to receive this beautiful butterfly. And all the money that we raise will help victims escape these abusive relationships. So, if you'd like more information, you can contact Valley Crisis Center, but we really would love the support of the community. So, thank you so much.
Grover and Diana, thank you for your attendance this evening, and Rena, thank you. Always two great events. Let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. It includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Please state your name and city of residence when you approach the podium, and if you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. There's a few pastors here. There are many more that we're representing today. They have Bible studies and services on Wednesdays nights. But we've been working on a project about a month and a half now, in response to some of the horrific events that's happened in our nation in recent months, much of which has to do with the idea of race. And so, we want to present before the City Council just a commitment, covenant, from us to our city on racism. Here's how we are going to deal with it, here's our stance, and our commitment to our city. Pastors and church leaders of Los Banas, California, covenant with our city in the following expression of belief with regards to the recent racial unrest. We believe that all people are created equal and in God's image. However, we also acknowledge that not all thoughts or ideologies of people are approved by God. Any ideology which states that one person is superior to another is morally reprehensible. Therefore, we call upon the leaders of our city, county, state, and country to take a stand against groups who pursue and proclaim these evil ideologies. We are united as Christians, and will proclaim from our pulpits that there is no place for racism of any kind in any of our churches. We therefore, or we further covenant to pray for healing, for accountability, and that racism be condemned by all people of all races. And lastly, we covenant to pray that Christ's message of loving our neighbor as ourself found in Matthew, chapter 22, verse 39, will echo through our churches and out into the community at large. This letter is, has 21 pastors and ministers' names on it, and 14 churches are represented on this letter. We'd like to present this to the council.
Thank you. Would you please give that to our, give the letter to our city clerk?
The command of Jesus is that we are to go to all nations and baptize people of all nations, so all are equal in the sight of God, and as far as being called to be sons and daughters of the almighty people for whom Christ died. And we want to express that love and promote that love in each person, so that the hatred that's here just enveloped much of Las Vegas, that hatred might be somehow, we need to fight against hatred by words and deeds of love and faith. May God grant that strength to each of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and pastors, thank you so much for that beautiful message and the way it was presented, and I echo the sentiments, your sentiments, of the City Council. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Good evening, Michelle.
I'm Michelle with Los Banas Chamber of Commerce, some events updates. The Chamber of Commerce is getting ready for our big Saturday event, that is the 2017 Seventh Annual Tomato Festival. This event will bring in a large attendance, between 10,000 to 15,000 people, and we will offer a variety of fun-filled events for everyone, such as live music, food, and commercial vendors, painting class with Cali Gray, tomato eating contest, salsa contest, and a chili relay cook-off. There's something for everyone, from Miss Tomato Pageant, tug-of-war with diced tomato pit, and a barbell rodeo crossfit competition. This event will also include kids' activities, rides, displays from tomato processing plants in the areas such as Cugomi, Paradise Tomato Kitchen, and Ingmar. The event will start at 10:00 a.m. at the Fairgrounds with a flag, with the VFW Flag Raising Ceremony, accompanied by the Los Banas High School Band, and will end at 7:00 p.m. The Chamber would also like to welcome Pizza Factory, one of our newest members. Pizza Factory is located at 2160 East Pacheco Boulevard, in between Food for Less and Shape. Pizza Factory will also be having their ribbon cutting on November 16th, while celebrating their one-year anniversary and their grand opening. Our October mixer will be held at Century 21, Eminem and Associates, along with Hot City Barbecue. And any questions or concerns, please call our office downtown. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Ramos-Andersen. I'm from Santanella, but I'm the president of LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens, here in Merced County. For us, we see a lot of change happening within our community and in our nation, and our leaders must reflect that change, but in a positive manner. Here we have the opportunity to come and live amongst a diverse community, and also get to know and learn from each other's different cultures. It's very key that our leaders lead by example and embrace that diversity. We should also have a celebration of day here in our communities of diversity, so everyone learns about each other's cultures. We really don't see that. We see some that are specific to certain activities and cultures, but one that celebrates everyone. Also, we must learn that if we are in crisis, that we address it and not wait for it to come to us to address it. We should just take the leadership roles that we each have been elected to do so, and let the community know that we are at peace, and that we will not allow this negativity impact our communities. And at this time, just like our interfaith community, us as a nation, we came from being immigrants. This country was based upon the immigrants that helped develop this country of ours as the United States of America and our Constitution. And we cannot forget what our forefathers wanted. They wanted a better life and a future, and we are the future. And all of us that are moving into Los Banas and into Central Valley, we will be the future, as well our children, our nieces and nephews. But again, we must come together and celebrate the diversity as a community of whole, and invite everyone, because that is what helps people learn from each other, and also the biases or the prejudices, the racism, will break those barriers. Again, thank you very much for your time, and we can come together and work together, and it's with LULAC, we continue to embrace that we are a nation of one, a nation of immigrants, a nation of people from different backgrounds, but we are all human beings in this country of ours of America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And City Clerk Maloney, tonight we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 206836 through 207099, in the amount of $623,250.29. Minutes for the September 6th, 2017 City Council meeting. Minutes for the September 20th, 2017 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5894, authorizing the Police Department to participate in the State of California Public Safety Procurement Program through the Law Enforcement Support Office for the acquisition of surplus Department of Defense equipment, including an armored vehicle for the use by the Los Banas Police Department. City Council Resolution Number 5895, authorizing the award of construction contract for Taco Bell/Rally Sewer Line Repair to RTC Construction Management, Inc., in the amount of $139,928. City Council Resolution Number 5896, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2017/2018 model cab and chassis, and authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to issue the purchase order to Fresno Truck Center in the amount of $86,512.69. City Council Resolution Number 5897, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2017/2018 model paint and stencil truck bid, and authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to issue the purchase order to Santos Ford in the amount of $115,999. City Council Resolution Number 5898, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2017/2018 model commercial paver, and authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to issue the purchase order to Holt of California in the amount of $147,738.40. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there anyone who would like an agenda item removed for discussion on the consent Director Faishan, I just have one question. On H, what is a commercial paver? What is that, how does that work?
This is a small self-propelled paver that pays from anywhere from 6 to 10 feet wide, and so, city crews can do such things as repave the trail and repave minor areas.
Was that like an asphalt paver?
It is an asphalt paver.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's an asphalt paver.
Okay, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, and one of its first things in the future will be the two trails.
Wow, so we'll be able to do in-house? Wow, so we'll be able to do in-house now with them?
It only goes, it only goes to a width of 10 feet, so it's, it's not really made for major road constructions. It's made for other items.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Freya.
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silveira.
I'll second.
Motion by Freya, second by Silveira, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to public hearing, item eight. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit and SEQA exemption to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment, Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza, located at 1335 West Pacheco Boulevard, Suite B, APN 430010413. And we'll go to, yes?
Can you put a statement on the record?
Hold it, let me, let me get you on tape here. Go ahead.
Councilmember Veronica showed up at 7:15. Can you state that for the record?
I sure can. Let the record reflect that councilmember Veronica Johnson-Santos arrived at 7:15. Thank you. Okay, and let's go to our public, let's see, let's go to Community Economic Development Director, Stacy Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. So tonight's proposal is for Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza, Conditional Use Permit 2017-02. The proposal consists of a type 41 alcohol license. This is for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. Blaze is a fast casual pizza restaurant. They serve all fresh pizzas with fresh pizza dough, nothing frozen, all fresh produce, and it's all made fresh daily and fast-fired. So you order your own pizza, it's personalized pizza, and they cook it for you right there, right after they prepare it. They're going to be open seven days a week, from 10:30 AM to midnight, and they are located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District, which is adjacent to the future Habit Burger, which is under construction currently right now. This project is located at 1335 West Pacheco Boulevard in Suite B. This is within the Stone Creek Plaza Shopping Center. It's a part of a master plan of a shopping center that's anchored by Target and what was Lowe's, but is now Hobby Lobby, Fitness Evolution, Harbor Freight. It's also adjacent to Starbucks, Yogalicious, GameStop, Famous Footwear, Petco, the list goes on and on of various retailers that we have in, within this shopping center. And Blaze Pizza and Habit Burger are the newest addition to this particular shopping center. And Blaze and Habit are co-tenants in, in one building. It is just south of Pacheco Boulevard and access to this project site. There's two driveways off of Pacheco Boulevard, on the east and the west, and then off, there's a driveway off of Ortega Lita Road, as well as Badger Flat Road, which is Michelotti Drive. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project has been deemed a categorical exemption per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility. According to our general plan, conditional use permits need to have specific findings in order to approve them, and that's what the municipal code tasks the approving body to look for. And I'm not going to bore you with all of those specific findings, but there's three general findings that relate to conformance with the general plan and our municipal code, whether it's detrimental or nuisance to our public health, safety, morals, and welfare, and whether it's compatible with adjacent uses. Then the municipal code goes on to have specific findings, those are criteria, for those conditional use permits looking to serve alcohol. And again, I'm not going to get into the specifics, but other than they would not contri- contribute, excuse me, to the undue proliferation of such uses in the area, our assessment is included in your staff report. Second, that they will not adversely affect adjacent or nearby churches, temples, or synagogues, and public playgrounds or private playgrounds, as well as schools, and there are no such uses within the immediate vicinity of this project site. They will not interfere with the movement of people, also along an important pedestrian street, which that finding has been made, and that if it is in close proximity to residential uses, it would be limited in hours of operation, which this project is not in close proximity to those types of uses. This project is included in Census Tract 23.01. That particular census tract is on the south side of Pacheco Boulevard. It runs from the city limits, which start at the Los Bajas Creek, and then run east all the way to Mercy Springs Road. Within that particular census tract, there are 12 on-sale licenses that are currently in use. They are all type 41 licenses, except for one license that is a 4D, which is for the bowling center, which is just for beer only. And the nearest license to this project site is for Black Bear Diner, which is located more than 1,300 feet away from this project site. So this is the project site. This is while they were under construction. They are actually looking to open tomorrow. They've passed all of their final expes- inspections, excuse me, and they are ready for opening. They had a soft opening today, and then on Friday, they're going to be offering free pizzas for everyone in the community. So public comment. Our public hearing notice was published in the Los Bajas Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on September 22, 2017. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 13, 2017, and at that meeting recommended approval to Los Bajas City Council for the use of a type 41 alcohol license for Blaze Pizza. So staff at this time is recommending that the city council consider adopting Resolution Number 5899, approving Conditional Use Permit Number 2017-2, as conditioned for the use of a type 41 alcohol license at 1335 West Pacheco Boulevard, Suite B, for Blaze Pizza. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions, as well as a representative from Blaze Pizza.
Okay. At this time, do we have any questions from council, or can I open up the public hearing and then bring it back? Is that all right? Okay, at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing and, let me read this first. City Council Resolution Number 5899, approving Conditional Use Permit 2017-02 for the use of type 41 alcohol license for on-sale beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for Blaze Fast-Fired Pizza located at 1335 West Pacheco Boulevard. And that's the actions before you tonight. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions, I-
Oh, I have one.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Do we, is there anything about a surveillance system?
Yes, there is a condition which requires interior and exterior surveillance. It has a requirement for the period of time that that recording needs to be held, and the location of that surveillance is to the satisfaction of our police chief.
Okay, so Chief Breezy has the authority to review the establishment and make recommendations as to the cameras and maybe locations?
Yes, and he, as with previous conditional use permits for alcohol, as we've started implementing this particular condition, he does go physically to the site, he investigates their surveillance, where their equipment is located, and works with them to have that equipment located to his satisfaction. And I would like to point out to you, it's located on page nine of the conditions of approval, number 16. It states that the applicant operator shall have monitoring cameras in the exterior and interior of the restaurant at all times, to the satisfaction and approval of the police chief. The applicant shall always maintain the surveillance equipment in working order and keep the video recordings for 30 days to be made available to law enforcement upon request.
So, so the, the, the last question that I have is, is that, does he also have the power to kind of dictate quality of the video? Because some of the, the systems that are out now, the HD systems are very clear and, and can, God forbid, help in any situation. So would he have the, the ability to talk about, to, to request quality or quality factor in the, the video too?
We specify the, this particular condition to retain video recording. And that is a difficult situation in terms of how much a business is then required to spend on the quality of surveillance. Typically, our police chief does review the equipment and is working with the property owner to get something to his satisfaction.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Just so long as he recommending, if he's happy with the equipment that's installed and the clarity, then, then I'm happy. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Silveira, go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5899 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5899. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item nine, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5900, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, proposed project list for the fiscal year 2017-2018, and amend the annual 2017-2017-018 fiscal year budget by increasing account code 215430220819, gas tax SB1 by $226,973, and decreasing account code 215430220-820 gas tax by $2,200, $226,973. Public Works Director Fashin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, this is the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, which we better, is better known for, to us as SB1. This is additional gas taxes coming to all the cities. SB1 addresses basic road maintenance, is a maintenance, it's a maintenance issue with rehabilitation and critical safety needs at the state and local level. Now, this is a partial payment this year, and that's why it's $269,000, this amount that we've asked you to approve. In normal years, it's going to be in the area of $667,000. This particular step is a bookkeeping step. In future years, we'll do this during the budget process. So what we did here, in order to be able to spend this money, not lose this money, we're asking for a budget amendment, we're actually, actually creating another fund, another fund to handle just this SB money, this 269. We have a listing of all the streets that we crack seal, slurry seal, and cold overlay. They all qualify, so this is going into the maintenance budget, and this qualifies backwards since July 1st. So what we're doing is we're adding a separate account with that 269 that we expect this year, 269,000, and we're removing 269,000 from the other gas tax. It doesn't disappear, it just goes into, goes back into the other gas taxes. And then next year, it'll, it'll all be part of the budget, it'll have its own line item, and we'll be able to do it. So, and what happens is because this was done after everyone's budgets were approved, they allowed this year to have budget amendments approved and sent to the California Transportation Commission by October 16th electronically with an approved resolution in order to allow this money to be spent. Now, this particular money, the, the SB1 money can be lost if you don't use it. The gas tax money that we're putting back into the gas tax is not, is just, goes to another year. And we have plenty of maintenance things that we can add to that. This is a very nice sum of money. We have been losing each year a little bit of money in our, in our street accounts for maintenance, so, so as we go forward, 667,000 will be very much needed. Now, this is totally different than the money we're getting from Measure V, of course, and, and the RTIP, the RTIP that we're putting together. And we do have scheduled, I believe it's November 7th, a workshop with the council, council to go over all these different funding sources and the recommended projects that we gave to MCAG, who is doing the RTIP. We had to give them recommended projects before it got to you, there was a timeline. But we will present those to you, and hopefully you will approve those. There's a lot of overlays in the arterials, there's a large sidewalk project, there's a lot of projects that we can do going down the road. And we'll also come forward and show you the regional. We won't have enough regional money to do all those regional projects that we, the five or six that we recommended, but we will have money to get them at least shovel-ready and maybe fish in some other funds, is what we're looking for. So this is a bookkeeping that will allow us to, to use that SB1 money this year with, and no chance of losing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions of Director Fashin? Yes, Silveira?
Yeah, Mark, so there's, there's a, it's underway, there, there's somebody, I think he's running for governor, that's, that's trying to gather signatures. I believe they gathered them, they just won a minor court battle on the wording on it to repeal SB1, and, we're calling it SB1. Is this money, is this money guaranteed in light of whatever happens with that, or is this something that we could be caught that we're spending it, and then if it does get repealed, we would, we would have to figure out how, how to pay for that?
I believe it's, if it gets repealed, I, I think they could take it back. I don't know the law and that, but the important thing about this, this, we took 269,000 out of gas tax fund, we put it back in the gas tax. We have that money available if this goes south on us, and hopefully that this won't happen. We do have that money available. What this long-term SB1 money does for us, it allows to keep about one year of street budget in reserve, so we always have about one year. We try to keep that, and we've been going down on that because the funds have been separate, been reducing. That's, this really helps with that, and try to keep the services as best we can.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
Yeah, I move to approve Resolution 5900 as read by title, with the commentary that people have been noticing about the road improvements in town, and they very appreciate it.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5900. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item 10, review of Merced County Association of Governments Bylaws, Joint Powers Agreement, and repre- I can't see the word, representational structure. Okay, Mr. Vaughn?
That would be me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you, audience, for staying. This will be very interesting, I'm sure. The council, a number of weeks or months ago, requested a review of the MCAG Bylaws and Joint Powers Agreement, and I'm prepared tonight to lead that review. It's going to be brief. In your packet, you've been provided a staff report authored by the city manager, and then you've been given an outline of what's called the Joint Powers Agreement with Merced Association of Governments, and you've been given actually the agreement itself. And secondly, in your packet, you'll see an outline of the bylaws of the Merced County Association of Governments, and then the actual bylaws themselves. So just backing up a moment to review something that you may already know, but MCAG is what's known as a joint powers authority, and a joint powers authority is a creature that's been created by the government code for the state of California, which allows public agencies, two or more, to band together for a common goal, common authority, to do things together. And that's what MCAG is. It has, MCAG currently has seven members, the county of Merced, and the six cities within the county of Merced. I believe the- I believe the association dates back to the middle sixties, and these are very common. GPAs can be founded for various reasons. I think we belong to another one, which is a risk management authority, where a number of local agencies have got together for self-insurance purposes, so joint powers authorities are very common. The joint powers agreement itself that you have an outline of is actually the document that, you can call it the charter, the Articles of Incorporation, it's the document that essentially sets everything in motion to set up the joint powers agreement and the authority. And in this case, as I said, there's six, seven members, six of them being the six cities of Merced County, and the county of Merced itself. The agreement is unremarkable in the sense that it's not unique. If you looked at any of these types of agreements throughout the state of California, you would find more common terms and conditions than you would find unique terms and conditions. And that's not to say that others are different from this one, but there's usually a common thread going through them, and that's what this one does. This one has a term of ten years. It was just recently renewed, in July of 2013, and will go for another ten years till 2023. It establishes certain responsibilities of the association. The Association of Governments is actually what's known as a council of governments, a COG, and there, the idea is that from a regional standpoint, they deal with regional-type issues. Merced County Association of Governments specifically, and their main function centers around transit, transportation, and solid waste. And so, those are regional issues that are dealt with through a regional vehicle, the vehicle being the Merced County Association of Governments. They act just like a separate governmental body, so, just like a city is its own governmental body, the Merced County Association of Governments is its own governmental body, with responsibilities, authorities, and powers. Also, in order for regions to obtain federal and state funding for transportation projects, you have to have a regional authority to deal with those things on a regional basis, and that's what Merced County Association of Governments does for the region and for the city of Los Banos. The agreement, like you said, is unremarkable in terms of how it's structured. It deals with who's on the board, in this case, the board is represented by six elected officials of each of the six cities within the county of Merced, as well as the five elected board, board members, so the board supervisors. So you have eleven board members. I would just, as an aside, say that that board structure, or that structure, again, is not unique, but nor is it something that's common either. If you look at these agreements throughout the state, the board structure can be, can vary, it's different. It's essentially what the members themselves decide how to structure their board. In this case, ever since I've been city attorney, I don't believe the board structure has ever changed. It's always been the six elected city officials and the five elected board members. It's a fairly simple document to read through. It deals with the, again, the term, it deals with how you can withdraw from the association if you wanted to, and it deals with how the association can be terminated. Although, every regional, every region in the state of California is represented by a COG through one way or another, some of them are just transportation COGs, others are more like association of governments, like Merced County says. So that is the agreement. I think, like I said, I think it was originally adopted in sixty-eight, and the current term is through July of two thousand, excuse me, twenty-three. There is a mechanism for amending the agreement, and that mechanism requires a two-thirds vote of the MCAG board. So that's, so if you look at the agreement as the document that got MCA, that basically formed MCAG, that's what that agreement's doing. We're a party to that agreement. The city of Los Banos is a member of that COG. The bylaws are simply that, they're just how, how actually the board operates. And again, if you look at the bylaws for Merced County Association of Governments, they're, they're not remarkable or unique. There's nothing that really stands out to me regarding the bylaws. I think if you looked at twenty or thirty or a hundred of these bylaws, they would same, basically say the same types of things. Again, there, there's nothing magic to the words in the bylaws. It's simply the roadmap and the bylaws that the governing board uses in its day-to-day operations in setting policy, directing staff, who, who's the CEO, who's the treasurer, whose responsibilities are whose. So, a lot of the language in the, in the agreement is duplicated in the bylaws. And again, there's nothing in the bylaws that I could find that's inconsistent with the agreement. Again, there's nothing in there that's remarkable in terms of what they say or don't say. So again, the bylaws is like the bylaws of a corporation, it's like the ordinances of the city of Los Banos, it's the, it's kind of the way that the MCAG governs itself, it's, it's the laws and the procedures they follow to do that. So, those don't expire, those, those are, those are in existence as long as the organization is in existence. So, from my reading of the two documents, they're fairly simple, straightforward, they're not, nothing in them is common or uncommon. And so I can answer any questions that you would like regarding any of those agreements, or the agreement and the bylaws.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Faria first, who had brought this forward.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We've discussed it quite a bit at the last meeting, so, the question is quite simple, do we want to have, do we want, as a city council, to send, to send as an item to Merced County Association of Governments, to reexamine the representational structure, see if it's still serving the county the way it was? It hasn't been amended since it was founded in sixty-seven, sixty-eight, but it's been sixty years, fifty years, and, you know, lots changed in the county, and so, I'm thinking maybe it would be nice to have them take a look at it, if we asked them to, and that's simply all it is. If they decide not to, they decide not to. If they decide to look at it, who knows where they may go with it. It may end up not benefiting us, it may end up benefiting us, may end up doing nothing at all. But I think it's something that needs to be brought forward at MCAG, just in the interest of good governance, in the tradition of the American Constitution, where we have the census every ten years to reapportion representation. I think it's time. So I would move to ask city staff to prepare an item to send to MCAG, to ask them to, to examine their representational structure, to see whether they would like to change it, or keep it.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, I just have a question. Are we going to send forward any kind of recommendation to MCAG, or are we just going to let them decide? Is that what?
I, I, the item, my idea is just to send forward something, to, just to ask them to have a look at it, and then that discussion could take place there. You know, we as a council, that's something we could discuss here, if anyone on the council had some recommendations. As far as I'm concerned, I just want MCAG to look at itself in the mirror and ask itself, are we, is it representing the county the way it should in proper distribution? Los Banos is particularly noticeable because we've grown so drastically compared to the rest of the county, and in relation to the rest of the county, and the fact that the county is much more urban now than it was fifty years ago, unless rural.
And, and the reason I'm asking is, you know, generally, when someone, or organization, or individual, or person is requesting something to be looked at, it's always good to have an idea of what you want to bring forward to that organization to look at, because they may sit back and say, well, you know, what is it that you want us to look at? You know, what do you want to change? And, and that's, that's the only reason I brought it up, is, do we have any idea about what it is that we'd like to see changed?
It's a good point. My own opinion is that the county as an, as an entity is overrepresented. They represent nearly fifty percent, the county as a single entity of one of seven members has almost fifty percent of the vote. So, all they have to do is convince one city to agree that something's in their benefit, and the county can essentially get whatever it wants at the expense of the rest of the cities. How do you address that? You know, ideally, I'd like to see the county, you know, there was a motion on the table, an item on the table at MCAG, I'll go back, I wasn't going to belabor this, but, in two thousand and six, where they were going to take it down to seven seats, where the county just had one. That might be a little drastic, and I don't think it would be realistic to expect them to do that in this environment, but I wouldn't, what I would like, perhaps they wouldn't think about taking it down to three, then they'd have to have a rotation of some kind. And the reason that, looking at other COGs, which I've done a lot of research, you know, they vary greatly. Fresno has only one county, only one supervisor on the entire COG, and they, all the cities have representation. Madera's, only has two cities, that, and they have three supervisors, and three city representatives, two of those city representatives from Madera, which is the major city, Madera and Chachilla, and those are, it's a six-man board, which is very unique, I don't know how they deal with ties, but, then, Stanislaw County, the whole board of supervisors is there, but I think there are like, there's nine city entities there. So, it's quite different. And Modesto, as the large city, gets, gets extra seats, and San Joaquin County, Stockton is a very large city, gets extra seats, and then the county seat. So, whether it would benefit us or not, and whether they would, I don't know. I would, I'd like to see the conversation take place, though, because it, you know, just looking at, well, if you look at it from an east side, west side perspective, it's seven to four, or seven to four and a half, because the supervisor across the fourth district goes all the way across from Gustine all the way to Snelling, across the north end of the county.
So does the fifth.
And the fifth, the fifth is, is Los Banos, and, and Dos Palos, and all the way to, all the way to the Fresno County line, yeah. And so, that fifth district, our district, is spatially, regionally, is the largest area district, and has lots of roads, only has one, only has one representative. So, there are different ways of looking at things, and I think it would be a great time to have the conversation, a lot's changed. The Merced County Board, the Association of Government Board has changed their, their, their membership, they've had a lot of change in public office there, and I think it's a great time to have the conversation. Ideally, yes, if, if we could get the county to relinquish a couple seats, but then, then the question's going to be, you know, which two? Or how do they, you know, I would recommend a rotation. And by the way, you can't, you have to have, you have to be a member of a COG, because if you're not, you don't get highway, state and federal highway funds. There is a big advantage, too, for being in this particular COG, in the solid waste distribution, because Livingston, because of Foster Farms, and their huge diversion rate, helps the whole county diversion rate in solid waste. So, there's a benefit to being part of that. Speaking of Livingston, Livingston is one of those cities that's grown dramatically, and also just has, you know, one seat as, as before, but, the, I think, conversation would be nice to have, because it had been brought up before, and it was, it was, it was quashed, and it was, it was a mixed, it was a mixed vote, I guess, because the TRB voted one way, and the, and the board voted another. TRB is the Technical Review Board, which is all the CEOs of the various entities. And so, there was some disagreement at that time, and that discussion was taking place. And so, maybe the cities would see it, you know, in the interest of the cities, now that we're more urbanized, we have, cities have issues that county doesn't deal with. We have a lot of issues that, you know, could maybe be helped by having a little extra weight on that, on that board. So, that would be my motion to, would be to have them examine it, if anyone wants, you know, if, if you wanted to amend, amend the motion to include, to include a special recommendation, then, you know, I would consider that, but I'd try and listen to some, you know, council discussion on that.
Well, just to add what you said, and taking into consideration Fresno, Fresno's over a half a million in population, and they've got one supervisor on their COG. I don't think it would be unreasonable to say that two supervisors would be an adequate representation, one for the west side, because we only have one supervisor that represents the west side. And the other supervisors can rotate on an annual basis for, for the east part of our county. That's, that's kind of the biggest thing that I see, and that would be something I'd, I'd like to see, is that the supervisor representation be limited, and that the mayoral council representation on that COG remain the same. It, it doesn't change the number of cities that we have on the west side versus the east side, but at least it makes a fair balance for representation as far as the board of supervisors is concerned, because the weight of the balance is on the east side again, and the west side is limited on what we receive and what we're considered for. So, I, I don't know if that's something you'd like to consider in your motion, Mr. Faria, but it certainly sounds fair to me that the west side should have a supervisor represented, and the east side supervisors can rotate on a, on a fiscal or annual basis, however they elect their officers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would, you know, I would be open to that, that recommendation, but we have a motion on the table, and have to have a second, and then amendment and process.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go to the city attorney first for any clarification he may want to provide.
So just thinking it through, should we make a fairly general request? If the matter does come up, it would come up in a form of some type of board discussion or board action, so there would be time to formulate some type of recommendation from the city of Los Banos at the time it's actually reaches the discussion stage at the board level, and I'm saying the MCAG board level. It may not, it may not ever come forward as an, as an item, and so, there will be opportunities either now, or at, at a later time, for the city of Los Banos to take a position on making suggestions and recommendations if it got that far. So that's just, just throwing that out there as another, another avenue to, to, as a group, to state what recommendation, or even as individuals at their meetings, to state what your sense is in terms of what the, the representation should be.
Yes, and I can tell you that it's something that I would be in favor of, however we decide to, to send a recommendation to MCAG, and each board member has the ability to place an item on the agenda, and then we can go from there. So the item will appear on the agenda. Yes, and then I'm going to go to Veronica after this.
Yes, my position was, since Mr. Faria had brought this up, is that we need to be prepared as to what we want as a council, and not have to backtrack and do something later, because, you know, whether our mayor brings it up, or someone else on the COG brings it up about how this, possibly reorganizing the voting status, and how many people are going to be on that committee, I'm just looking at the position of Los Banos being prepared to make its recommendation to that COG. That, that's purely how I'm looking at it. And, and I'm not particularly interested in waiting for some secondary decision to be made, I'm, I'm interested in whether or not we're going to be able to move forward if that comes up, then our mayor, who currently represents us, is going to be prepared to make that recommendation if it, if it happens and moves forward.
Well, the first thing we got to do is see if they'll even consider it, and I understand that if they do consider it, we want to be ready. We also, you know, we want to be able to get it in front of them, we want to be able to get that discussion going, because I think it's going to come, once it, once that discussion happens, I think it's going to become very clear what, what needs to be done. So the recommendation, I could state the motion this way, we instruct staff to prepare an item for our mayor to take. We instruct staff to prepare an item for a mayor to take that would recommend the reexamination of the representational structure, with a suggestion of possibly limiting the number of seats of the supervisors on that board.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, and that's what my suggestion was to Mr. Faria's motion, is to limit the number of supervisors on the board, because each city needs to have its own representation. It's just that, you know, the Board of Supervisors, whether they have five people that sit on the, on the Board of Supervisors, and we have one person that represents the west side. So, I just want to see it more fair and equitable as far as representation is concerned for MCAG.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mrs. Santos, and then to Mr. Silveira.
Okay. Well, I really have a comment. Mostly, I do agree with the council member Faria saying that it is good to take an inter look at ourselves for, I'm sorry, and then look at themselves for their structure. But I also have had a question for you, my, I guess, our representative. Has there been talk with other cities on the west side about possible, about them feeling fairly similar to the way we do about this?
Ten years ago.
And it hasn't been brought up since?
Well, you know, it, I would say, in part, every so often, something comes up. But I think the whole purpose of MCAG and my voting record, I would like input from the council as much as possible before I take a recommendation or a vote to MCAG. Because we are a five-member body, and my vote basically is saying that five members agree with the way I'm voting. And, and so, the more input that you can give me, and the direction that you can give me, I would be highly grateful for, for that input. Because this is a body that affects the west side, and it affects Los Banos in, in what comes up in projects. And I'm going to make a few comments after everyone else has spoken, and, and we can talk a little bit more. But it did come up ten years ago, it was almost a reality, and Mr. Faria has more knowledge on that than I do, but I wish it had happened then. It would, it would have, it would have helped, because we do not have one sole, a sole represent, one person on the Board of Supervisors who just represents the west side. The supervisor in District, which one is Lloyd Pereira, Scott?
Four.
Four?
Four, yes, sir.
Lloyd Pereira of District Four represents the east and the west side. So, he is not a sole representative of the west side. Mr. O'Vannion represents the east and the west side, because he's incorporated with the...
Crosses the San Joaquin.
Crosses the San Joaquin River. So, so we do not have a, a single representative on the Board of Supervisors that represents just the west side interests. And, and to me, that's not right.
Well, I'd have to say that I do like the way that Deborah phrased it, council member Deborah, phrased it, and the fact that they should possibly limit the amount of supervisors just to make it, give it option, make it fair for east and west.
I mean, I mean, regardless, everyone has their personal pet peeves and their interests, and, and we need to have representation, too. So, Mr. Silveira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if you could refresh, because I think this might be a question for the city attorney. We make a recommendation as this body to take forward, and you have the ability to put stuff on the agenda. So, we're fairly confident that this will be on MCAG's agenda to discuss?
Yes.
And then, at that point, you would bring up what we discussed here, and then there would be a vote whether to move forward on that?
Whether, yes, just like we do when we bring up a council member request, to, if there's interest, then we move forward, and then staff does research.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to put, make that, so, just a few numbers. There are currently, by population, there's 256,000 people in the county. There's 42,000, give or take, I rounded up, rounded to even numbers, 42,000 in the City of Los Banos, 82,500 in the City of Merced, 14,000 in the City of Livingston, 5,300 in the City of Dos Palos, 5,800 in the City of Gustine, and 29,500 in the City of Atwater. So, so roughly, there are 179,000 people who live within cities. And therefore, there would be 77,000 people who live in the unincorporated areas that are governed by the county. So, to Mr. Faria's point, maybe it is time for them to look at the makeup of the MCAG board. But at the same time, I don't, I can't see it being a one number, because that's, to me, that's unfair representation on the county, because you still have 77,000 people living within the county. Two seems like it could be a good number, but then now you're into that situation of an odd, an even-numbered board. I would like to see a recommendation, and I want to put forth a recommendation that I feel confident that will actually be looked at and possibly passed. I think if we recommend a number like one or two, then we're not going to get enough support from the fellow members of MCAG board members to even move anything forward. But if we put forward a real, in my opinion, a realistic approach that says, be represented by three members of the county, and then there would also, there would have to be some discussion, saying something like, there has to be a minimum of one member from the east side, one member from the west side, and then a rotating member. That's what I would like to see forward. Because I think that is the, the best possibility of getting them to actually entertain the idea of changing the makeup, makeup of their board. Because how many members, is it six members, I read, you need at least six members to do something?
Yes.
Is, is to move forward with action. Now, this would be an amendment to the contract, correct?
Actually, the amendment requires...
Wait a minute, Mr. Vaughn.
An amendment requires eight affirmative votes.
Okay, so, so when you're talking about eight affirmative votes, you know, I'm not trying to throw no mud on Merced here now or anything, but it's, it's in their best interest to, to kind of keep it, you know, just the way it is, because they have a lot more representation. I mean, there's, you have three board members who touch in and around the City of Merced and the City of Merced. So, I just think if we're, if we really, truly want eight members of MCAG to get on board with it, we have what we've kind of, what we would love to see happen, would be one, maybe, you know, from a city's perspective. But realistically, I don't think that we get anything, the best that we could hope for is three. And so, that would be my recommendation, is, is two. And obviously, you know...
Remember, nine is an odd number.
Right.
Exactly.
With three, that would be nine.
Not, three would be nine.
Exactly.
That's an odd number.
It is, and that's why I think that's the best that we could get past, is nine.
So, we don't end up like Madera?
You don't end up, because if you go, if you do two, now you only have an eight-member board.
Right.
And breaks the tie.
And, and I will say, is, I feel this way today, and I'll feel this way tomorrow. I know that I spoke to some folks prior to them being elected to the Board of Supervisor, and they said they wanted just one member of, only one member from, represented by the county. And I feel, I think now that they've been, been elected to county Board of Supervisors, and if you asked them if they only wanted one, they would, they would quickly tell you that, oh, maybe, maybe I ought to rethink that, because...
No one gives a hour.
Because it's, you know, they're giving up, because you have to understand that there are unincorporated areas. The District Five Supervisor doesn't only represent the City of Los Banos and the City of Dos Palos, but it also represents the community of Olta, the community of San Antone, pick District One. You have, you have La Grande, you have Plonata, you have all these unincorporated areas that, they need some fair representation there, too. So, those are just my thoughts on it, and I'd love to hear what the rest of council's thoughts are.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak this time?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is, I would hope that whatever supervisor, if there's a change on the board, whatever supervisors on that rotating seat or sitting in that position is going to represent the county fairly for everyone, and not just any particular area, especially if it's a smaller number than what it is now. That's the only thing I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments right now? Okay, well, yes, go ahead.
Make a couple comments, if I may. Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing, for bringing this forward, because I don't know if everyone understands the fact that because the mayor is a member of the MCAG board, he could bring this forward to MCAG on his own. And he wouldn't have to ask permission of the council to do that. And so, I want to thank you for bringing these items to council, so that our whole council can converse, talk about them, and send you with a unified message.
Lot, lot stronger.
Yes. And because that's not what happened back in 2006 and '07, and we weren't, council wasn't even told about what was going on at the time. And that's why the change that I would hope would have happened then didn't happen. So, now I think the best we could hope for is, is to limit the county to three, the supervisor board to three, and we need to make sure that one of those represents, at least one of those sits on the west side. And that would be my recommendation.
Okay. We have a recommend, we have a motion. Okay, I'm going to ask for a second, and then I'd like to make my comments, if that's okay. All right, do I have a second to Mr. Faria's motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right. Part of my, I guess, frustration with MCAG is that, you know, I read this, and I read the bylaws, powers of the board, approve or deny projects recommended to the board for appropriate action. The, twice, maybe it's three times, Mr. Faria, you have to help me, money was appropriated to a project on the west side, and then the money was taken away. And it'd be like us awarding Santos Ford a car contract, and then the next meeting saying, oh, we didn't really mean to do that, we're going to take it away. I'd like to see some language that, once a decision is made, that decision, you can't go back on it. Because some, that project was very important to us, and now it's passed us by, because I promised the city manager I wouldn't go into this, and I'm not going to. But it could have been beneficial to the west side, and, and what happened is, MCAG giveth and taketh away. And, and that's not right. So, it's important that, once a decision is made, that decision is made, because we were banking on money to forward a project. Now that project has passed us by. So, once they make a decision and enter into a contract with the city, that contract has to be adhered to. Not change the language to suit your own purpose, because you have another project on the east side. And my only closing is, $450 million, $500 million on the east side, nothing on the west side for road projects. That's my proof. So, when we bring forth items, and I'm going to make sure that, that, I want you to review that MCAG agenda, and if you have any questions, I want you to call the city manager. And I want your input in voting. I want fairness, because what I'm suggesting is, with language, is that not just Los Banos be treated fairly, but all cities in the county be treated fairly. So, I'm hoping that that change will occur. If not on paper, just in conscience. We have a, a new MCAG board. I feel very good about this MCAG board. I think there, there will be fair representation. And, but what's happened in the past basically hurt this city with the money that was allocated and the money that was taken away, because they've had a better project. So, I'd like to see language when they approve a contract, not in the bylaws, but when they approve a contract, that, that, that contract can't be changed, and that action will go forward. Because we all have to bank on a decision that was made, and once that decision is made, that decision should stay. And MCAG is the only board that I know of that has, has basically made a decision and then reneged on that decision by vote. So, that's my little commentary, and I wanted to stick to the bylaws itself. So, once you approve or deny a project, the project is approved or denied, and then whatever funds are allocated, it stays with us. And I don't think any of you on this board would disagree with that. Okay. The motion before us is stated by Mr. Faria to, to basically send a recommendation to look into a, the restructuring of the, of the MCAG board. And second by, I'm just paraphrasing very loosely, so make sure that you talk to the city attorney to get that. Okay? And it was second by Mrs. Lewis. So, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carrie, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Let's go on to notice and announcement of vacancies on the following commission committees. Can we do these all in one motion? Do we have to do them separately?
Just the...
Just the announcement?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, all right. That's okay. Parks and Recreation Commission, three vacancies. Planning Commission, three vacancies. Tree Commission, three vacancies. Economic Development Advisory Commission, three vacancies. Airport Advisory Commission, three vacancies. And Measure P Committee, two vacancies. And it's an information item, and no action is taken, so if anyone has any comments, we are going to advertise for those vacancies. All right. Item number 12, advisement of public notices, and tonight we have three reports. Director Elms?
So, the first item is a conditional use permit for a Type 47 alcohol license. This is for El Campesino's Restaurant. The location that they're moving to is 1639 East Pacheco Boulevard, which was formerly known as the Las Vegas Steakhouse. The second item is a conditional use permit for OA Holdings, number one LLC. They're requesting an increase in maximum display area and height for a new multi-tenant monument sign on Pacheco Boulevard. This property is located at 1420 Pacheco Boulevard, and that is in between Quiznos and Espanias. And then the last public hearing notice is conditional use permit number 2017-05 for a large family daycare. This is to be located at 554 Cabernet Street. It's Cozy Home Daycare, operated by Raquel Avala. And these items will be discussed at the Planning Commission on Wednesday, October 11th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Any questions on the three reports? All right, let's go on to item number 13, city manager's report. Mr. Terazas?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on behalf of the Police Department, the department will be holding National Night Out.
Oh, I'm sorry? It's not on?
I'll try that over again.
Okay.
Just on behalf of the Police Department, the department will be hosting National Night Out on October 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Pacheco Park. Gary, it is the fall, so I'm not sure you'll be having a dunk tank, because it's going to be a little cooler, but if you are, I'll be there throwing the ball at the target for you. Free food and drinks, crime prevention, safety tips, fun and games, hopefully the dunk tank with the chief, we'll get him a wetsuit, maybe, keep him a little warm. Anyway, that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mr. Faria.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much. Remind everybody about Tomato Festival Saturday, and also the Orlando Fátima Festa this week. They have festivities going on Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. They have rosaries going on through the week. And finally, for all our prayers and our thoughts and our sympathy, go out to the people of Las Vegas, and our thanks and our gratitude to the, not only the first responders, who were tremendous, but other civilians, who are also tremendous in their response to that horrific event. And we do, we do pray for those people, pray for our country.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
I wanted to thank City of Los, thank our staff, and then also the City of Atwater for inviting us to the Tri-County Dinner. I enjoyed myself, met a few people from NCAG that I hadn't met before, so thank you for that.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had another great salute to seniors this past Friday here in Los Banos at the Com... We had another great salute to seniors this past Friday here in Las Manos at the Community Center. And I always enjoy going to those events and also their monthly dinners as well. And I want to echo my sentiments with Councilman Faria in regards to the tragic events that have happened in Las Vegas. Truly, we need to come together as a nation and really be concerned and love one another. But we do have problems and we have to work on them and do the best that we can. It's really tragic that we've come to this point in life where whatever bothers us internally, we have to destroy other people's lives rather than dealing what's happening inside of us. So, and I want to thank the pastors this evening for coming forward and praying for our nation and making their statement in regards to how we should come together as a nation and as a city. And that's about all that I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Silveira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too wanted, just my thoughts and my prayers to go out, my, actually, my sister-in-law was at that concert. Everything, she's safe, her friends are safe. It was just a crazy experience, but I was, you know, listening to some of the afterthoughts on it and it reminds, there's one gal that spoke and talked about it and they said, well, are you afraid to be in Vegas now? And she said, no, you know, I'm not. When we become, when we become fearful, then they win. If, you know, because it makes you stop to think, do I want to go anywhere? Do I want to just become a hermit and stay at home? Because you can't, we can't fix all the problems. And I listened to some of the press conferences with the Clark County Sheriff there and where he said it was unpreventable. There's no way that you could prevent that. It's just a tragic accident. This guy obviously was completely off of his rocker, you know, and nobody really knows why yet and it'll come out in the days and weeks to come. But it just, one of the things that, you know, police officers say, if you see something, say something. And they say, you might think it's nothing and you don't want to bother them with it. I think that they would rather that you give them a call and let them run it down and find out that it's nothing versus it could be something. And, you know, this crazy individual at last, I mean, the number's all over the place, but 20-something guns that he was able to take up to his room and ammunition and, 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 and over, obviously not all at one time, over the course of a few days. Somebody had to see something that maybe just didn't look right, you know? Nobody's that cool, calm and collected. So again, I just, it's sad, it's tragic, but I think, you know, what doesn't hurt us will make us stronger as people. It makes you realize, you know, I was listening to some of the stories on the news that people were telling of the situations that they were in. It's just sad that it takes such a tragic event to show the true humanity of people and how much and willing that they want to care for each other. They actually said they had too much blood in Vegas at one point. Like they, you know, it has a shelf life, but they had people lined up that were in lines for hours, five, six, seven hours, waiting in line to give blood. So a community comes together. So just be vigilant and, you know, we got to keep on living, I guess. It's sad for those folks, just innocent lives lost at the hands of a crazy man. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, the chief has told me time and time again, be a good witness, be a good observer. Please do so. If something's not right, please contact the police department. Let them be the determiner. In early November, we're going to have a meeting to talk about prioritization of road projects on the West Side. And so we're going to talk about what this council feels, what staff input should take place and what kind of projects we should be looking at for Measure V and for road funds. And this is a great idea and I want to thank staff for putting this together. But what's going to come out of this? Well, I will tell you, when I was at M C A G the other day, there's between $21 and $26 million available in two years for state highway projects that we can leverage together with any money that we have for Measure V. So I would tell you that it's imperative that we come up with projects on the West Side for the improvement of our road system. Very important meeting. So then what are the outcomes of that meeting? Prioritization of road projects. They're going to bring road projects forward. Then we can put those on the, what's the acronym, Alex, for the?
RTP.
RTP. Regional Transportation Projects.
Plan.
Plan. Regional Transportation Plan. And then that qualifies us for state funds and also to use Measure V regional money. So that something's very important that's coming up and I just wanted the public to know about it. This last week, our city manager sent out in an email and a Friday memo, the guidelines for the West Side Measure V Committee. And I would ask council, please make sure that you have looked those over and see if you agree with those or have any comments for me to take back to the West Side Measure V Committee. These are the guidelines that govern that committee and I would like all of you to be familiar with them because again, those are agendas that I'm going to be asking you to look at also to make sure that it's not just one voice I go with. I go with the council's voice. And I'm so proud of this council tonight for the way they came together with the M C A G recommendation. So thank you so much and this is what we want to take advantage of and how we want to proceed in the future. It's a new day and it's a new M C A G. So with that, unless there are any other comments? Just before we leave, thank you again for all your comments and your sentiments. I can't add any more to what you've said about Las Vegas. Everything was very appropriate. So with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at, what time is it?
8:33.
8:33. Okay. Okay?